Good morning. I'm calling to order the meeting for CES for Tuesday, May 23rd. You'll bow your heads with me, we'll say the prayer. Your heavenly father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for all the many blessings you've bestowed upon Columbia County. As we look at many issues this morning related to public health and safety, we ask that you guide our decisions to keep those who carry out these services to our citizens safe. Please be with us now and help us to do all things in your will, in your most holy and precious name, I pray. Amen. Please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance. By the United States of America, the republic which is one nation, one visible.
With Chairman Duncan and Commissioner Richardson here, we have a full quorum. Gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to look over the minutes from the April 25th meeting?
Yes, move to consent. Move to approve, sorry.
So moved. Do we have any changes to today's agenda?
They're just ready for your approval, Madam Chair.
Okay, we'll move forward with the agenda as is. Seeing that we do not have any presentations this morning or consent agenda items, we'll move right into the debate agenda. And we will start with Mr. Luton.
Thank you. First item we have for consideration this morning is the renewal of the contract with Simke Tennis Academy for tennis instruction at Patriots Park. This kind of contracted with this vendor for several years now in exchange for allowing the vendor to teach lessons in clinics at the Patriots Park Courts. They help us operate our in-house tennis programs, tennis in the spring and in the fall. So staff recommends approval of this renewal.
Second.
Well, he, right, so technically, yes, it is Patriots Park and Riverside, but he's in sub Riverside to another vendor, so. And then at the new courts, Columbia County Racket Center, we'll have a third vendor. We do think potentially, once the pickleball courts are built, we'll consider maybe a countywide tennis vendor to oversee it all, but at this point, we're not quite, we're not quite there yet. And not at this time. Currently while the, before we reopen the tennis center, the vendor we're going to use there is operating out of Lakeside, but those Lakeside courts are so busy with sort of just open play use. Haven't made the decision yet to contract those out, just because we want to leave as many courts available as possible.
So we have. Okay. Okay. Second, so we'll move that to consent. Next.
Next, we have the tournament agreement for Bass tournaments with Clark Hill Committee. I've also done this for several years. See here, we have a series of eight tournaments. On the low end, they'll attract about 50 boats, on the high end, about 150. The larger ones will also attract some out-of-town visitors and some hotel stays. We'd like to support this organization with $5,000 out of the hotel motel fund. Staff recommends approval. One $5,000, correct.
Move to consent.
Okay. So moved. Next.
This is the renewal of the contract with the UGA Board of Regents for extension services, office personnel. This year, it's in the amount of $191,593.07. Staff recommends approval.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This is the renewal of the contract with the CBB to help promote the county as a tourism destination. Staff recommends approval.
Move to consent.
So moved. Next.
This is the renewal of the contract with Brainfuse, which is an online tutoring service operated out of the library. This, we've had this for a few years now, and it continues to gain popularity. Understand, Mary Lynn and her staff have worked with Brainfuse to do some additional marketing, so numbers and participation has begun to increase. We'd like to continue this contract, and we recommend approval.
How has it increased? What are the numbers? How do we know it gets you?
Mary Lynn, do you have, do you have those numbers for Brainfuse?
I do. We get monthly reports from them. So far for this fiscal year, we've had 400, 545 login sessions.
A year.
It's up about 150 from last year.
I have no reference, but it does sound like much.
It does. I know, that sounds bad. So we, we do login sessions, but we can also get, like, where they go, how many internal of the database that they use, but I don't have those, but I can get those.
I'm just wondering that it was up, and so 400, so basically 450 people have used it?
545.
Or 545?
And they're using it from the library, they're logging in?
They can.
Or they can also.
Both, home and at the library.
All right. We're going to continue to push this and market it a little harder, because it is a relatively new service for us, so we would like to get those numbers up.
Yes, sir.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Next, we have the contract renewal with Alex Cooper, who does our computer instruction at the library. We've had him for a few years now. See the long list of classes he provides. So far this year, this fiscal year, we're at about 1,100 participants in these courses, so should end up at about 1,300 or 1,400 total. Staff recommends approval of this renewal. These are free, free to the public courses.
Move to consent.
So moved. Next.
Next, we have the Greater Clarksville Regional Library System Agreement, along with the level of grant funding. This year's in the amount of $440,106.89 appropriations from the state. That is for salary, that's for the salary reimbursement grant, $84,494 for the materials grant, $6,581.89 for system service grant. Staff recommends approval.
I'd like to see.
Does, does it obligate us to any state rules by taking the money?
Just the rules outlined in the agreement with the regional, what's outlined in the regional budget guidelines, or, excuse me, the regional system guidelines. Mary Lynn, can you add any more to that?
They're not involved in any governance, any oversight?
No, they're, no additional requirements.
No, we, we have to send reports to the Georgia Public Library Service, but we, the SSG grant can only be spent on items like supplies or things we need for the library. Material grant has to be spent on anything that circulates. And the salary is allocation versus the county for our salaries, is that right? I said that right?
So there's, is it five positions that are considered regional wide positions?
Mm-hmm.
Housed out at Evans, but service the whole region.
Second.
And move to debate. Thank you. Next.
Next, we have our Civic Rec software agreement, which expired, which expires this June. So we have a one-year renewal in the amount of $21,271.36. This handles all of our operations for Parks and Recreation. The PAC is actually using this a little bit for their rentals. Staff recommends approval.
I have a question on this one, and it's, it goes in line with the next item as well, but I'd like to see, and I don't know if it would be through this software, but some sort of online reservation system at some point for reserving fields and just trying to make it a little bit easier for folks who are trying to reserve fields and courts and things of that nature. I think right now they're calling or emailing, which is taking our staff's time as long, as well as this day and time. I feel like you should be able to go online and reserve something like that.
It is. This system does have that capability. Really, the main hurdle right that, right now with that is field availability and how complex scheduling is. It's really easier and saves more time not using the automated system. So when our in-house seasons are over and more fields become available, we can then kick it over more to the automated system, but when we're in-season, it's easier to sort of talk through what we have available and where, just because it's so sporadic and random, so. Yes, and what happens when we make the schedule available online, some teams will try to see what's available and show up without reserving it, and five teams will show up at one time, and it causes conflict and stuff like that. So that's, that's part of the reason as well, just the, the demand. That makes sense? So they want to see, okay, because our, our policy is all fields are available for use for no charge at first come, first served, or if you want to reserve it and make sure you have it, there's a fee associated with it. So to avoid paying the fee, they'll see what's available and just show up, but there's several teams wanting to do that, and it's, and sometimes cause.
Drama.
Problems.
The pool is just too big. His staff needs the flexibility to be able to manually manage that.
Right. But during the offseason, when more fields are opened up, it's not an issue, so ever, so. Correct.
Yep. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Final item is a resolution amending the fee schedule for Parks and Recreation. This is to add a clay court membership at the new Columbia County Racket Center. We're proposing a membership fees of $350 per year for county residents, 500 per year for non-residents, and 275 a year for county residents 55 and over. Staff recommends.
How do you police that?
Through the Civic Rec system, so they'll sign up.
Forgive me, it's open, it's running.
We have staff there.
They'll have to flash a card, or they have to sign?
Yeah, so once they become a member, they'll have a, a membership card, swipe it at the office when they get there, and we'll be able to monitor the clay courts through that system. Correct.
Can you publish the, when, when it does go through, will you make sure that it gets kind of out there so people are aware?
Absolutely.
John, is that? Put you on the spot, but is that correct? We're not charging for all other tennis courts?
That's correct. You, you can reserve other tennis courts, so we have that in the fee schedule, but they're very rarely served, so the hard courts will remain open, and we have enough out there for first come, first served use. And our tennis instructor will operate out of the hard courts as well, so.
What about the pickleball courts? Does it pertain to those as well? I would think.
I would foresee the pickleball courts not having a, a membership when those open.
I would think it should, if we're going to do it. I mean, I would look at the facility.
Well, we certainly can consider that when those are.
And if we're going to do, if we're going to actually have a membership, then it'd be a facility as opposed to, which court are you going to?
Yeah, well, we wanted to make sure at least that the clay courts initially had a membership, because we want to be able to monitor use a little bit. Those are, those are very high, maintenance intense, and, and really you need the correct kind of shoes and footwear out there that can be damaged. We may be doing maintenance on some of those courts, so they may have to be pulled down, and we, we wouldn't want to leave clay courts open to first come, first served use, because they could be misused. So 350 a year for a resident, the, the previous membership at Petersburg Racket Club were paying $150 per month, so this is still a very good deal for.
All over there.
Correct. Correct. So I, I think, I think what we'll need to do is probably monitor the demand of the pickleball courts.
Like, do you see you come back with a proposal to?
Sure.
Wrap them in?
Sure. That's to, right, that's for organizations who want to run small tournaments, mainly out of Patriots Park.
I want to play.
No charge at Patriots Park to go play. Now, there is a charge at Wildwood to go play, because that's managed through the agreement with the International Disc Golf Association, so there are daily greens fees to play out at Wildwood, but not, not at Patriots.
Did we vote on that? Move to debate. The fee, so I'm assuming.
So moved. You, Mr. Luton?
Thank you.
Ballin', how are you?
Good morning. This first item is to reclassify a fire technician officer, fire technology technician position. Previously, this position was held by a EMT firefighter, managed all of our technology, and I do not want it to be public safety position, or I want IT's technicians. So I'm requesting to reclassify that from a grade 25 exempt to a grade 22 non-exempt with a cell allowance and a category B vehicle allowance. All of it, and a budget savings of $14,200. Staff would recommend classifying the vacant.
Second.
So moved. Next.
The renewal on our EPR Systems contract, that's our fireworks records management system. We also share that with the fire marshal. It's where all of our reports, inspections are tracked. Heard exercising a third renewal in the amount of $45,660 total between our two services and staff. Option.
Second.
So moved. Next.
This is a mutual aid agreement with the city of Grove Town. We made aid agreements with all of the vigorous organizations, and so this is just adding another five-year term for this. Staff recommends approval.
I did have a question on this one, and reading through this item and the next five items, there are some mutual aid only, and then there's some mutual and automatic aid agreements. Could you explain that?
Sure. So, and I actually believe Grove Town has mutual and automatic as well. Automatic aid means on the initial dispatch, you will automatically contact the other agency, reset response, that you will go to. Automatic aids allow you to share ISO standards that you have, so do it with McDuffie County, because that keeps the Class 1 out in the area on White Oak Road that we just were too far away from. So we're able to extend that one, because automatically McDuffie will come. And then for Grove Town, we do automatic aid, so that they can have a better ISO rating in that area where we respond to, and that's all from inside of Grove Town, as well as they're automatically coming to us all the way through gateway.
So did they request that from us, or do we? It was just interesting that Grove Town has automatic aid and Harlem does not, so I would.
Well, it's.
If that was requested.
We, we would do.
They don't want it?
They don't want it.
They don't.
Did not want it.
They did not want automatic aid.
Okay. I didn't know if that was something.
No, I mean, if.
Requested, or they requested.
Something they wanted, we certainly entertain it.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, when they, typically anyway, when there's a structure fire, was recently called us. So the, what you lose is time.
Right.
Maybe a structure. I do not know.
Yeah, there are four, aren't they?
There are four? On the chief?
I believe it's four.
Three or four?
Okay.
A rating? Rating, save their citizens.
Good.
Homeowner's insurance?
Good.
So, once you establish, once you establish time where we're responding to their incidents on the initial dispatch, they get, count that as staffing. Comes from as well as.
That's really, just to clarification, from a four to a one, there's really not a lot of insurance savings, the savings. So it would. So, but, I mean, it, it could be beneficial, but that, that's just a choice that the city of Harlem has made. They, they've made significant investments to their fire department and want to respond to their own fires within their jurisdiction, and we respect that.
Thank you.
Move to consent.
So moved. Next.
Right, so the next is a mutual aid agreement with the city of Harlem. Staff recommend approval, five years.
Move to consent.
So moved. Next.
This is a mutual and automatic aid with Clarksville Volunteer Fire Department in McCormick County, South Carolina. Large neighborhood, just across the river on Highway 28. All volunteer fire departments, so as long as I've been here, 29 years now, automatically on initial dispatch, a structure fires there, done, staff, five years as well.
Second.
So moved. Next.
Four mutual aid agreement with Thompson McDuffie County. The same agreement for another five years, and staff recommend approval.
So moved. Next.
Mutual aid agreement with Lincoln County, for another five-year term, and staff recommends approval.
Second.
So moved. Last.
This is agreement for ambulance, emergency, and non-emergency medical services with Goldcross EMS. Goldcross's contract is automatic to a renewal term with a requirement to revisit. Want it to be adjusted, so Goldcross contacted us and presented two options they would like for you to consider. Option one being increase of the subsidy from $850,000 a year to $975,000 paid monthly, and maintain the exact level of staffing that exists today. Also, they requested in that option that Columbia County would assume the responsibility for dispatching EMS out of our 911 center. Option two is to reduce the subsidy from $850,000 to $750,000 in Columbia County, and would resume, assume the responsibility for dispatching out of the 911 center. Also, remove the requirement in the contract for QRVs, or two of those, and then the reassignment of a shift supervisor to EMS director on a Monday through Friday, eight to five shift. What's, and decides the option you would like to move forward with, we will craft the contract. Staff recommends option two, with the requirement that additional performance adjustment of $1,500 be assessed in each instance a unit is without a paramedic for any length of time, all the other performance adjustments or contract remain in place. The system is designed to have seven paramedic capable units available, even the contract that exists now. We, there was a staffing problem getting paramedics, so lowered the level of the responders on the ambulance and put three 24/7 paramedics in quick response vehicles, help manage patient care, ride in. So if there are seven paramedic-staffed ambulances, then the design of the QRV. So that system would be in place. That's what we want to contract and pay for, seven paramedic available units. The ambulance? I would assume, yes. Well, I don't want to speak for Goldcross, but typically or historically, and.
I'd prefer.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Mitch. The question. Oh, Vince Brogdon, 4328 Wither Road, Martinez, Georgia, 30907. On the ambulances for some staffing challenges that we're having to keep ambulances up. So what happens, some days if we have a last-minute call-out, that kind of thing, and we move the QRV or shut the QRV down and move them on ambulance, we're fine, because we're shutting the QRV down. But looking at our current situation, it was different several years ago when we came up with the, with the QRVs, because we were lacking paramedics. And so in order to move those resources over and keep the ambulances up, and we had plenty EMT openings in, or plenty EMTs put the trucks up, at that time, the structure was the way it needed to be. Now, things have changed again to where now we've got more paramedics of, there are days that we have QRVs with paramedics, and then we have days where there are ambulances that have paramedics as well. But, in, in looking at our staffing plan, we would like to see the QRVs, get the paramedics, put them on ambulance. I'd rather have ambulances coming to you when you call 911 than the QRV. I'd rather have ambulances coming to you when you call nine-one-one than the QRVs because they have the transport capability. And Columbia County is a unique situation where everybody that we pick up has to leave the county. And sometimes you're gone two and a half, three hours to be able to transport downtown, get back to your area. But that's what we would like to see happen. And then, you know, a couple more, you know, a few more years, that might change again to where we might put the QRVs back up. We could put another, we could put another EMT on. As long as we have an EMT basic or EMT advanced, we can keep the truck up. But what I think the guideline is for the fine is if there's a paramedic on that ambulance and they call in sick, I can't really put another EMT on it or I get fined, or if I, even if I put another EMT on it, I still get fined fifteen hundred dollars.
So let me just recap it. So the QRVs were put in place because all of the ambulances did not have paramedics. So quite often we found that when fire responded that there was a paramedic, was a firefighter. The firefighter then was required to do paramedic level care and ride that ambulance in. So chief was losing firefighters for hours. So we came up with the QRV so that you had floating paramedics, if you will, who could cover down and get to a scene. And if they needed to ride in, then that QRV could ride in with the paramedic or as the paramedic on that ambulance. As he's saying, now it's kind of flipped. You have, we have more paramedics, so the need for the QRVs is not as great. But what we want to be guaranteed is that if we give up the QRVs, we don't have ambulances running around with just advanced DMTs because then we're in the same boat. That's the reason for fifteen hundred dollars if you have an ambulance without a paramedic on it. Because you're, you're giving up the QRVs, that frees up how many paramedics? Six, seven, eight?
Eight.
Eight. We ought to be able to make that work. We need the ambulances for transport. I can get a paramedic to the scene and do paramedic level care, but if they need to be transported, I can't do that. So I need the ambulances more than I need the QRVs.
Weren't the QRVs originally for situations that were not necessarily life threatening?
No.
Or the transport, I mean, originally it was so we could get there quickly.
It was really to provide another paramedic to get to.
Additional paramedic, okay.
That didn't have a paramedic on it. That was really the key. Just didn't have enough paramedics to go around.
The issue that Mr. Kennedy that, that I have with the fine is if I have a paramedic that resigns or quits, there's such a national shortage of paramedics, I don't know if I can get one in the very next shift, forty-eight hours later. Because sometimes they give me notice, they quit that day, sometimes they give me two weeks. There's such a national shortage of paramedics, it's going to be hard for me just to fill that vacancy with a paramedic. In order to keep the ambulance up, I mean, I can probably put another EMT on which the ambulance would be in service, but I'd still get fined until I find a paramedic. Well, it could be months. A paramedic class now is a year, year and a half. If I've got four or five students or employees that I'm putting through paramedic school, it might be eight months before they get out of school, be able to get their licensure so I could put them on ambulance.
I, I still think if you're freeing up eight paramedics. If we give up the QRVs and I have ambulances without paramedics and I'm right back to where I was, you're going to lose firefighters.
Understood.
And that can't happen, so, I mean, I, I understand the shortage. But we got to figure that out. If you're going to give up the QRVs and potentially have eight extra paramedics, I think on the average, we're, we're what, short? Maybe two ALSs with paramedics? So I mean, more you need to. I don't know, Vince, I, I just can't. Me, that's not acceptable. I, I think the penalty needs to stay and we need to do paramedics.
What's the penalty for not running the ambulance at all?
Fifteen hundred. No. Right.
Question. So would the preference be just to shut the ambulance down versus to put two EMTs on?
Preference would be to get a paramedic on it. I mean.
Standby, I don't know.
This is.
You can't just replace them that quick.
I, I understand that too, but I'm freeing up eight.
So we're not free, you're not freeing up eight, that's the. Well, we are, but that might be the staffing for the month. But if I lose one person, even a paramedic, it's not easy to replace a paramedic as it is an EMT. The, the goal and the strive would be to put a paramedic on every ambulance.
Could be.
And it would be, but if one calls out sick at the last minute. I mean, it's, it's hard, going to be hard for me to find a paramedic versus finding an EMT to get that ambulance back in service to be able to respond to the emergency. That, that's kind of where I'm.
And I, and I, I do understand, but, but you know, this is, this is a private entity, we're paying them to do something, I think we got to do it. I, I mean, I, I just don't, I don't think we can back off. If, if I, if you freed up in a, one of your apparatus and you had eight extra firefighters, you probably have one on standby then. I, I think we can make it work. John, do you have that number?
John Smith, forty-two eighty-six Colony Square, Evans, Georgia. We, EMS is a part-time business for a lot of people. It's also a stepping stone. So there are very few of us who have made this a career. At the current time, we have probably twelve, fourteen full-time employees in Columbia County. The rest we fill in with part-timers, okay? They have other jobs, they work for us, somebody else, they're not committed to a twenty-four on, forty-eight off schedule. So for us to put a paramedic on every truck, every day, seven trucks would be seven paramedics a day, three days a week, or three shifts would be twenty-one plus the, the major or the supervisor, that's twenty-two paramedics we would have to have. And this day in time, that's almost impossible. I mean, we have a lot of paramedics in Columbia County, we're predominantly paramedic staffed every day, but we do have to do advance and sometimes intermediates. Medicare's definition of an advanced life support truck is an intermediate or above, an I, an advanced EMT or a paramedic. Nationally, if you look at the statistics, a true paramedic call that only happens about ten percent of the time, where we have to give a cardiac drug, pain medicine, something like that. The other ninety percent of the calls can be handled effectively by an advanced EMT or an, or an intermediate. We would love to have a paramedic every day, every truck, every day, ideally. It's just not possible today in this environment to do that. And if we free up the QRVs, we hope everybody stays. You know, we're not guaranteed that all eight of our folks are going to stay and they may go somewhere else. I mean, we have some competition very close by that's offering a twenty thousand dollar sign-on bonus for a paramedic right now. So we take them off their QRV, put them on a truck, we might, we might lose a couple. We don't know yet. That's just the facts.
Part-timers.
Well, we're using part-timers. Now, where we struggle is weekends because if you're on a twenty-four, forty-eight schedule like we are, or I was, you know, if it was Saturday or Sunday, we worked. Workforce is a little different these days. So we, we struggle on the weekends and there are times where we're one or two trucks short. Mother's Day was horrible for us. It was terrible, but you know, about half our staff right now is part-timers who may or may not work a weekend. So, and that could be a paramedic, I mean.
Twelve to fourteen paramedics, you said, full-timers, is that?
Right now, yes.
So those, you meant those are full-time paramedics?
Right.
We've boosted our salaries the last two weeks, we've increased our salaries for EMT paramedics. So we're hoping to attract, we're blasting social media, we're trying to.
I shared it.
We appreciate that, saw that.
Trying to get people in, but you know, staffing sometimes is a challenge.
And QRVs.
It would be, it would keep the QRVs up, we would have QRVs still in service.
That's correct.
Contract right now calls for an ALS ambulance, which is an intermediate or above. It's, it does not require a paramedic on every ambulance.
You could have potentially a, turn this down just a touch, get some feedback. You could potentially have a, a ten thousand dollar penalty anytime one of our paramedics had to go downtown. As opposed to not having a paramedic on a truck, I'm spitballing, kind of off my head.
You're saying if we, if we supply a firefighter to.
Have a paramedic and somebody has to go downtown, they have to go with them, right?
If they're getting paramedic level care.
Correct.
And there's no paramedic on the ambulance and we have a paramedic on the scene, that paramedic's required to go with them.
Not, that's ten percent of the cases, can we not push that one through the roof and do away with the other? I'm just thinking through. Oh, yes?
I am overstaffed by three when you count those in training, but I have like fourteen in training, so I'm missing fourteen on apparatus at the moment.
But how many trucks has he shut down?
About thirty.
I get it. Our number one child, I agree. He is one. Play tennis courts and racquetball and.
Pickleball, oh yeah.
Whatever.
Shake that.
What would we do? How would we address?
So sort of an environment that exists now is there's a bit of a, I think this is new from my experience that Central can't staff downtown either. So what's happening at, at the shift changes, eight AM and eight PM is Central starts offering two hundred and fifty bucks, just come down here and I'll give you an extra two, top of your pay. So I know that creates a terrible time for them staffing because they're counting on somebody tonight and thirty minutes ahead of time Central forgets them off. And so now you've increased your rates to pay the employees to work, but they're still not doing it because there's a bonus on the other side. And, and that, I mean, we, I, I don't believe we can taxpayer dollars just start throwing out bonuses twice a day.
It, it really is a problem that's inherent with whole EMS system. EMS system not where it should be. Well, that's, that's, but he's heard me say this before, right? EMS is public safety, public safety shouldn't be, should be done by the government. But right now in this environment, it's not what it is. And there is a challenge, we would be faced with the same challenges. Now, we would have other paramedics who we could replace if we had to. Would be a challenge. I'm not saying it's not a challenge, but we have to overcome it because in the end, firefighters are going to be sitting there waiting for an ambulance to come for an hour or more. Don't have the ambulance, we need the ambulance.
Of course, option one is to keep it as it is now. The challenge with that, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to have the QRVs and the supervisor as a paramedic. What, what we end up having to do is shut those down so that the ambulances are standing. That way instead, and for the contract, that's a fifteen hundred dollar penalty per pop. And just to stand up one ambulance, you got to shut two QRVs down. So theoretically, that's three thousand dollars just to make, not a business decision, a public safety decision, which they do. And they'll take the penalty if you hit them with that. So that one is still a challenge as well. We're asking to have more, them to have more people. They can't, we're going to, we're going to levy the, the fine.
Now, in both of the, and in both of these options, we are taking dispatch, which.
Correct.
Totally agree that we should because there's a lot of operational benefit that will come from that. Dispatch belongs in nine-one-one. But that there is a cost savings that we are giving Gold Cross by assuming that role. I mean, that's, not that we're not helping either, we're trying to help, we understand the challenge.
We do work really well together and it has been a really good back and forth.
It has.
It has. I mean, option two, I think is the best for all of us because we put more ambulances on the street available. But without the paramedic requirement on an ambulance, I mean, it's, it's only ten percent of the calls nationwide. And we're no different than the, the national standard. We can do very well with an advanced or an intermediate. Option two for me and Vince is, would be best for everybody without that penalty. That's right.
And it, and it would, and it's less expensive for you to not put a paramedic, just from the business side of things, not put a paramedic on the ambulance and to just staff the ambulance with an advanced EMT. But to remove the penalty altogether, and I know that you're, you're saying that you'll try to put a paramedic on there, but to remove the penalty altogether is, is, I don't think that's.
Back to what I'd said a minute ago, that if one of our firefighters has to be engaged and participate, then jack the penalty up through the roof, but don't charge it if there's not one there. That's just a thought. I don't know. May I say something, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
When we had an agreement with Aiken County and when we were doing nine-one-one to assist Aiken County, we're no longer doing that as a few months ago. But what they were doing is if the, one of Aiken County EMS paramedics had to ride in, we would pay a hundred dollars back to the county for that, not a penalty, but it was a charge basically to use their fireman. I would be willing to do something like that in lieu of a fine. If you, you know, if a Columbia County fireman had to ride in with us to the hospital, I could be charged a hundred bucks.
We're way apart on, we're, we're, we're in agreement on the thought, we're way apart on the number.
Right.
It could. It could.
Would we take a paramedic off the rescue truck if we needed one to ride in?
I've got them all over.
So, I mean, we'd probably be taking somebody off a rescue truck if we had to do that and not.
You may not have one on a rescue truck and he may be, I mean, if it's a.
I mean, we're talking what ifs.
We are talking.
And it could be the battalion chief because I have several of those that are the shift commanders that have to run incidents. Several of those are paramedics and they have to deliver that care, they can't.
I, I guess, I guess the bottom line for me is I, I'm not willing to lose firefighters where I don't have to. You, you are not fat on firefighters. And you don't want to bring a truck down. If fifteen hundred dollars isn't the right amount, talk about the amount, but I think not having a penalty at all is the wrong answer.
I agree with that.
Contract, the business, what we've agreed to. And, and it's a challenge and you've got a challenge and we understand that, do understand. We have lost firefighters who have recently become paramedic qualified because of bonuses. It's the same thing Europe gets. So, so we understand it, but we owe seven ambulances to the county, to the citizens of this county. And, and it's a business right now, so that's what I'm paying for. Absolutely, you can.
On the pickleball court.
Yes. Pickleball court.
Pickleball courts.
We clock in.
We could, we could put cradle points on all of.
On the dispatch.
Absolutely. We all agree on that.
I think everybody agrees on it. How quick?
Chief can have it done by the end of the day.
I I I do, I do want it, I do want, we we have a, we have a January deadline in here. It's, it's my intent to do this immediately. If if the commission wants to go this route, we can start setting that up now. We did budget for it in the next budget, anticipating these conversations, sir. Yes, sir, we have included a line item for it now in in the upcoming budget that will take effect July first. But if it's the desire of this board, we all feel, I think there's no argument that that we need and want to take over dispatch. So if that's the desire, we can start moving that way now. We can use some additional available funding that we have today to start that process if we want to. So I don't know that we could have it up and running by July the first, but I think we could have it up and running very shortly after that. I think the January date was really to give us time to order the necessary equipment and the software, conduct the training, hire the employees. But quite frankly, we will probably end up, certainly there there will be an available talent pool. If Gold Cross no longer dispatch, they have dispatchers that we would be interested in them because they have experience. So if we could get them and just teach them the Columbia County way, that would cut down on some training time. I don't think it's going to take to January, I would say it'd probably take four to six weeks, maybe. We can get started now if that's the desire of the of the board.
We would not wait.
No, it's not our, it's not our intent to wait to January.
We we wouldn't take any more time than it would, we would need, as the county manager said, to acquire the people, acquire the equipment, conduct the training.
Option two.
I'll second that, then we can work through the other. Fifteen hundred for no ambulances, or is it twenty thousand if we have to go downtown?
Well, that's the staff recommendation, whether you add that to your motion or not, on the, on the amount. I I would, I wanted to throw one thing for consideration if I can, Mr. Vice Chair, if that's all right. Ju- just for consideration, because I think I've tried to sit and listen to all the angles here and try to figure out, you know, how best it is for us proceed, and I heard what Mr. Brogdon said about what they do in Aiken County. And and then what the chairman said about, about doing that when the firefighters ride in. I don't think it's a good idea to say fifteen hundred dollars if they don't have a paramedic, because you're right, it's, it's just standard business procedure, we shut, I don't, we know the ambulance is shut down. If it's the same penalty to not have a paramedic, then I might as well just shut it down and not do it, I'm paying a penalty anyway, I might as well not have any cost incurred. That's not what Mr. Brogdon wants to do. In every conversation we've had, and not the one personal feelings in this, we've known each other thirty plus years. He is interested in in providing the service if he can. I know he's got challenges, but we also have responsibility to the citizens to make sure it's done right. That being said, if there's a possibility to not shut that ambulance down, if advanced DMTs are okay any other time, and we did allow that in our contract, maybe it is a five hundred dollar instead of a fifteen hundred dollar, or maybe it's a five hundred dollar if one of our guys rides in, and that's payable to the county, not to the firefighter, obviously, because they're on our time. But that would be on the rare instance that we would have to provide a firefighter off of a truck. There would be some sort of compensation back to the county for using that person for the contract. It's just something for consideration, not a fifteen hundred dollar shutting the truck down, because the trucks should all be running. But if if we have to put a paramedic off a fire, maybe that's a five hundred dollar cost back to the county.
Have any direct, any data on the last few years of how often this happens?
Well, it happened, we don't have the data, but it happened, we could go, go back and pull that, it happened a lot.
It was.
It happened a lot when we were really short of of paramedics. We we were pulling them a pretty decent amount, maybe a couple of shift, one shift or two shift.
If it happens ten percent of the time, or if it happens seventy percent.
I don't think it's happened as much now since we stood up the QRVs, but now we're talking about losing the QRVs.
Yeah.
So I think that's part of the issue. So just for consideration.
I understand there would be cost incurred for them to keep that ambulance up and running, but wouldn't there also be an opportunity for revenue if that ambulance is up and running?
Yes. There is.
And there's not for QRVs.
Right. Just, just for the sake of conversation, obviously it's going to debate, what I, what I would like to do, certainly is the will of the board, whatever y'all want to do, but I I know we're we're running out of time here, but this is where we. This is where we make, this is where we make our, our sausage here. And just, just to take all those things into consideration when you're making your motion, I know you have a motion in a second, I'll, I'll be quiet. I I don't think our business is done. Yes, sir.
Look at the different options. But it needs to be.
Right.
For me to put a fee in there today, I don't, I don't.
Understood.
But, but your motion is option two to debate, and then we work out the details of.
Absolutely, and and moving forward.
Yes, sir. And the very last thing that will need to be decided is what we do with these QRVs. The county purchase these QRVs, they currently have those, if we're not going to use them, does the county get them back? I'm just throwing that out there to put on the record, so when the full board discusses this next Tuesday, that'll also be a consideration. We could talk about that in the meantime as well.
So we have a.
About three, right?
Yes.
With the exception of the one.
Right.
By the.
Right, that's right, because they'll still be using one.
So we have a motion in a second? Okay, so we're moving that to debate, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Any legal matters? Thank you. Staff reports, back to Chief Waltman.
I've provided the year to date and a monthly comparison for our instant responses and our year to date budget. Questions?
No questions. Do you have any commissioner comments or public comments? No executive session items, so we will adjourn and pick back up with the Richardson's committee in just a few minutes.